We call this meeting, the August 12th meeting for the Mexico City Council to order.
Miller?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sugar?
Yes.
Miller?
Briggs?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, do we have approval for the minutes of the July 22nd regular session?
We approve the minutes of July 22nd regular session.
Second. Miller?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sugar?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
All right, for the August 5th, 2019 special meeting session minutes?
Make a motion to approve August 5th, 2019 special meeting?
Second. Miller?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sugar?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Okay, first order of business, Bill Number 2019-53, a resolution authorizing the Mexico Area Community Foundation to distribute funds according to the Clarence Rothwell Last Will and Testament, reading by title only in passage, Mr. Slavel.
Yes, Your Honor, the Rothwell will was set up to benefit the poor, the sick, needy of the community. Dr. Clarence Rothwell was a doctor at Audrain Medical Center for a number of years. When Audrain Medical Center was no longer public and sold to SSM, the trust, which they were in charge of at the time of the will, then had to move to a nonprofit. The Circuit Court had actually set the funds then to go to the Mexico Area Community Foundation as far as to administer the funds, have them, invest them, oversee them. Since that's happened, there has not been any distributions. As a part of that, they also then set that the City of Mexico then would be the nonprofit as far as the one to authorize the distribution of funds. The Mexico Area Community Foundation has received a request from the Community Sustainability Project, and they would like to use this year's funds to support that request. This resolution would authorize the Mexico Area Community Foundation to distribute those funds, which is accordance with Clarence Rothwell Last Will and Testament, and this resolution would also allow the foundation in the future to approve funding requests in accordance with that will. So we would ask that you proceed with reading and passage of the resolution.
So this is just a one-time distribution?
This is now, and then in the future, where we're setting this up is that they have, they would also be able to distribute them according to the will, and if there's any other changes, then I gotta come back to you guys.
Okay. Okay, so we're giving all the money to somebody?
It's in the community foundation as far as the will, the trust, money's held there. All they can spend out of it is the proceeds, and they're just allowing the proceeds to be spent, just the income.
And so, we're still gonna oversee?
The community foundation has the money, invests the money, maintains the fund, all of that. The distribution, meaning the income off of it is what can be spent, is all.
And we decide where that's spent?
Ultimately, you get to decide. By the passage of this, you're allowing this distribution to happen, and you would allow them to minister it in the future according to the will. Now, if you would like to have each time they want to do something, then we can also do that as well, but at this time, we're telling them that they can do it according to the will.
Well, how much is it?
Well, it's been building Lou for the last four years, and there's like, what, $8,000 is all or something?
Well, that's the income.
Yeah.
The principal was actually administered, had to be distributed by the Audrain Hospital and Board of Trustees, and they would make an annual distribution.
I think the trust total is like $136,000.
The community foundation has... The community foundation has lots of different funds. They invested as a common fund, and then assigned to you their rate of return on the money you have deposited. For example, Miss Missouri Scholarship Funds, they're in the Mexico Area Community Foundation. The Rothwell Trust is there. They have, frankly, several million dollars that they administer on behalf of the donors who've put it in there. They're all volunteers, no one is compensated, and they make these various decisions. Under the Rothwell Trust, since the hospital is no longer public, the ultimate entity to determine where that money would go must be a public entity. So that's why the city council was named in the... We had to get approval from the Circuit Court, and then you selected to have the community foundation, which is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit, administer and invest those funds for you. So this is their earnings since their last distribution based on the rate of return for all of the money that they administer.
So because of the change in the hospital status, this is the first time the council's been asked to do this?
Correct, correct, absolutely.
Okay. Who's in charge of the Mexico Area Foundation?
I can't name you all of the board members, I apologize for that. I know Steve Hagan is the president of the board, Howard Tansey's also on the board, and I believe Dan Erdl is their attorney. Like, I can't...
Do you know?
I don't know the names of all the board members.
Flotter Williams.
Flotter Williams.
Melissa Buckner.
Yeah.
Is on the board.
And who is the Mexico Community Sustainability Project?
That is run kind of through the chamber, it's that education program that is part of the schools.
I'm making a motion to read Bill Number 2019-53.
Second.
By title only.
Miller?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sugar?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill Number 2019-53, a resolution authorizing the Mexico Area Community Foundation to distribute funds according to the Clarence Rothwell Last Will and Testament, reading by passage of Bill Number 2019-53.
Second. Miller?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sugar?
Yes.
Briggs? Yes.
Okay, Bill Number 2019-54, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign documents pertaining to the sale of real estate located in 1938 Providence, Mexico, Missouri, reading by title only in passage, Mr. Slavel.
Yes, Your Honor, the attached resolution is authorizing the signing of documents pertaining to the sale of real estate located at 1938 Providence here in Mexico. We obtained this property through part of a settlement, the property was listed for sale with Remax, Betty Jo Side District, that property's been listed for about a year now. We have received an offer, purchase, the property was listed at 32-5, we've received a cash offer upon negotiation with Mario and Donna Garcia for a price of $28,000. The attached resolution would authorize the signing of the documents pertaining to the sale and disposing of the lot, the empty lot at 1938 Providence. Therefore, we'd recommend council proceed by title only in passage of the attached resolution and authorizing the sale at 1938 Providence.
In doing this, would we... Kenzie be talking about a grinder pump for these people?
No.
They're down... They're downstream?
Yep.
It depends on where they sit their floor elevation.
Which we'll review first.
We're all cognizant of that.
I think so, will be reviewed, yes.
So we... So we're not gonna let them build a house, but we're gonna have to put in a pump, are we?
It's not necessarily true, but if they choose to build a house with a lower floor elevation, a pump may be required. But that's until they present a plan, we don't know where that floor's gonna be, so we don't know whether a pump will or will not be required.
But they would be required to put that in, not us.
That's what I'm getting at, we're not gonna have to pay for a pump.
Nope.
We can sell for $28,000, my guess, precious, how much is it gonna cost if we have to put a pump in?
Right.
Yeah.
I move for reading of Bill 2019-54.
Second. Miller?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sugar?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill Number 2019-54, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign documents pertaining to the sale of real estate located in 1938 Providence, Mexico, Missouri. I move for passage of Bill 2019-54.
Second. Miller?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sugar?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance, Bill Number 2019-55, an ordinance approving the Till Lake Village Plan Unit Development Plat 1 to the City of Mexico, Missouri, reading by title only in passage, Mr. Slavel.
Yes, Your Honor, we will have Rita Jackson present this resolution.
This agenda item concerns a request for approval of Till Lake Village Plat 1 submitted by Ryan Holden, General Manager, Till Lake Village, Mexico LP. Till Lake Village Plat 1 is located north of Till Lake Road between Fairground and South Clark. This plat consists of four large lots created by the street right-of-way, as you can see on the attached smart board. Till Lake Village Plat 1 dedicates the streets Amelia Drive and Falcon Drive and utility easements to the city for public use. The development is a planned unit development, so no further subdivision is necessary at this time. A review of the plat by city staff finds that it meets all the requirements of a final plat. An ordinance will follow accepting the improvements for public maintenance and establishing a stop sign at Amelia Drive and Till Lake Road. This property is zoned R2, two-family district. Till Lake Village Plan Unit Development consists of 10 two-bedroom duplexes, 10 three-bedroom duplexes, a shared community building, and a playground area. On August 6, 2019, planning and zoning granted preliminary and final approval of the plat, the minutes of that meeting were attached. Staff recommends that council proceed with two readings by title only and passage of the attached ordinance. This ordinance has been posted, required time. And in our audience tonight, we do have Pete Ramsell, if you have any further questions regarding the plat and the subdivision.
I'm just confused because, I mean, I'm from Georgia, and when you build something like this, it's like an apartment complex. Because they own everything, they own everything on both sides, they built this, so why is the city gonna be responsible for taking care of the road and all of that for their property? Because they're the only ones there, so it's no different than an apartment complex. They deal with, I've seen this many times in Georgia where they've done this, entire subdivisions have been this way, so I'm kind of confused why we need to take responsibility for it. Because we don't, we... They own it all, and they can't, they're not gonna be able to sell it by law for 20 years, or whatever the bonds are, so...
Chris, this is a matter of urban planning, if you will. Falcon Street will connect to Fairgrounds, that'll be public street, and in the future, any future development that goes east could be public, wouldn't necessarily be private, and it just doesn't make sense to have a public street connect to a private street connect to a public street. We felt it would be better to have those as public streets and public right-ways for maintenance as opposed to leaving it all private.
How much property do they own north of the drawing here? You know?
The drawing, I think, represents all that they do on...
That is true.
Is that true?
Yeah.
I thought we were gonna have a place we could, we were gonna store all the cars and trucks and boats and trailers. Wasn't that something we've talked about, Chris?
Yeah.
We never, I don't, this is the first time I've ever heard that.
They have their own drives.
Well, I understand that. But if you ever go down the street, it's just lots of cars and street, man, we've got boats and camper shit. I thought that that was part of it.
We talked about that, and they talked about putting it at the very end.
That's what I'd like, really, to throw property past the end.
Because it is, if anybody's been down there, it's a tight, it's a tight fit down through there.
It's a nice looking place.
It is a nice looking place.
There's a lot of places in Mexico that also has that tight fit on some of the streets, so...
Yep.
I mean, I live off of Kent, and you drive down there at any given time, it's the same sort of thing, so...
I like, no, excuse me, Pete, there is provision, there's a turnaround at the end of Amelia, or not quite to the end, but close to the end, that was a provision made for where the trash truck could turn around and anybody else comes up into the street, so they're not trying to turn into one of the driveways or anything. So there is a provision there that's made, it's a T-type turnaround, it's not a cul-de-sac.
Not a cul-de-sac. Is that one house from the end, or two houses, or at the end?
It's almost at the end, it's up in...
I don't remember how many units, I think they're made up to...
I actually turned around there about a half hour ago. It's wide, it's convenient, it's easy to make that turn.
Have we taken one of our snow trucks down there and turned it around? See how that's gonna work?
Trash truck goes in there quite easily, and that's, that's the width that we built it, so it could accommodate that size truck. All concrete, so it could, again, accommodate that truck. But, but the street plan and the plat was done basically because this is the city requirement, and they wanted it done that way, and we built the street to city specs for that exact reason, so I guess from a developer's perspective, we did what we were told to do.
Well, they'll take this the wrong way, but we were told a lot of things that were gonna happen out there that didn't happen either, so... If you don't remember our last meeting when you walked out because you were so mad.
I've never walked out of a meeting here, sir, you're exaggerating.
Not walked out, like left, but you didn't say bye, you just, you were mad, because you told us it was gonna be...
No, sir, I disagree with you, that is not true.
Well, would you agree that what you promised us is not exactly what you gave us?
I think we gave you what you, what I promised you. Where do you think I disagreed?
Because you said that that was gonna be a workforce housing.
And that is, that is, it is a workforce housing project.
You made us believe the majority of that was gonna be workforce housing.
Correct.
And then when it came down to it, you said, "Well, we have to follow HUD rules," and we have to follow, well, I don't know if it was HUD, but when it came down to it, I think it was 20% you said only would have to be that?
20% of the units are designated for workforce housing at a higher income level.
Right, but that's 80%.
The people that are there are simply there because the housing authority sent them over with a voucher, they could go to anywhere in town, and there is not a landlord in town that can deny them basically to rent.
I understand what you're saying, but when you came to us, you did not tell us anything like that. I read back, when we had that last meeting, I read back your own words, your own paper, there's nothing about only 20%.
I agree.
You said, "This is what it's gonna be," and 80% of not, and 20% of of, is not really a, to me, that doesn't really qualify as a workforce housing. At least half should be, if you're gonna say that that's what it's gonna be. So, I mean...
Thank you, I have to go, but whatever the rules are and regulations, that probably he doesn't have a lot of say over. I will say on my own, I've been out to the apartment complex, and I was very pleased with the units and what I saw, and I appreciate that we have new units in Mexico that are affordable, and that people can try to get into.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate that, and I'm not pleased with the way it looks, and we're, we're still working on it. We had a bad situation with the contractor there, the contractor is no longer involved, we have taken over, and we're gonna make it look like I promised it would look. We'll come back and completely reseed it this fall. I was on the phone before I walked in here, I don't like the way it looked tonight, there will be somebody over there addressing that tomorrow. So we're gonna be the good neighbors. And if Rita calls me and says you need to get over there and clean something up, I'm gonna be there to clean it up. That's been my commitment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'm gonna go ahead and move from this bill. I move for a first reading by title only of Bill Number 2019...
Fifty-five.
Excuse me, fifty-five, please leave off the second number.
Miller?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sugar?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes. Bill Number 2019-55, an ordinance approving Till Lake Village Plan Unit Development Plat 1 to the City of Mexico. I move for passage.
Second reading.
I'm sorry, got to the second reading. Move for the second reading of Bill Number 2019-55.
Second. Miller?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sugar?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Now I can read it. Okay, an ordinance approving Till Lake Village Plan Unit Development Plat 1 to the City of Mexico, Missouri. I move for passage, thank you.
Second. Miller?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Sugar?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Okay, Bill Number 2019-56, an ordinance accepting the streets, storm sewer and sanitary sewer for the Till Lake Village Plan Unit Development Plat 1 in Mexico, Missouri, two readings by title only in passage, Mr. Slavel.
We will turn to Kenzie Russell to cover this ordinance.
If I may, Mayor, I'd like to address this and the next ordinance together. They deal essentially with similar items, and that's the improvements in Till Lake Village. This ordinance accepts the sanitary sewers, the street, and the portion of the storm sewer within the street right-of-way for city maintenance, so those improvements would become ours to maintain. The following ordinance adds to our sign schedule, a stop sign at Amelia where it enters Till Lake Road.
Okay, that's all.
Unless there's questions.
Mayor Sugar? I move for reading of Bill Number 2019-56.
Second. Miller?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sugar?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill Number 2019-56, an ordinance accepting the streets, sanitary sewer, storm sewer and sanitary sewer for the Till Lake Village Plan, Plan Unit Development Plat 1 in Mexico, Missouri. I move for the second reading of Bill 2019-56.
Second. Miller?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sugar?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill Number 2019-56, an ordinance accepting the streets, storm sewer and sanitary sewers for the Till Lake Village Plan Unit Development Part 1, Mexico, Missouri. I move for passage of Bill 2019-56.
Second. Miller?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sugar?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Okay, Bill Number 2019-57, an ordinance amending Chapter 38, Article X, Article 10, Schedule 3 of the Traffic and Vehicles Schedule of the Mexico City Code, two readings by title only in passage, shall I have a motion?
Make a motion to read Bill Number 2019-57 by title only?
Second.
Miller?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sugar?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill Number 2019-57, an ordinance amending Chapter 38, Article 10, Schedule 3 of the Traffic and Vehicles Schedule of the Mexico City Code. I move for second reading of Bill Number 2019-57.
Second. Miller?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sugar?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Bill Number 2019-57, an ordinance amending Chapter 38, Article 10, Schedule 3 of the Traffic and Vehicles Schedule of the Mexico City Code. I move for passage of Bill Number 2019-57.
Second. Miller?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sugar?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Okay, other business claims.
Make a motion to pay the bills?
Second. Miller?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Sugar?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Okay, comments from the council. Councilman Miller, if you go first.
I don't think I have anything to say, I'm just gonna pass.
Okay.
I'll pass as well.
I was gonna pass, y'all too. No, I'll pass, I really don't have...
Well, the only thing I have to say is, I wanna thank everybody who came out on this weekend to the concert that we had, "Mexico with Love," so I thought it was a success, and I've had several people ask about it, second one, when's the next one, so maybe next year.
I do appreciate you putting it on Facebook, 'cause you can watch it, watch it on Facebook, it looked like fun.
Okay, Mr. Slavel?
I have nothing this time, Your Honor.
All right, well, now it's time, if anyone from the public would like perhaps anything to say, please state your name and address for the record, and keep comments to a maximum of three minutes.
Hi, my name's Joshua Price, and I live at 116 Mary Street, and the Audrain County Crisis Center, they need more help. The DFS out at, by Walmart, they're a joke, they're, they're a joke. There was an employee out there that asked me, "Well, can't men control their private parts in front of my five-year-old daughter?" You know, the people at Access, you know, you can hear it in their voice, you can see it in their eyes, they care, but they need more help. They need, they need an in-house specialized attorney that can help these people that go there, that, that are going through a crisis, that, you know, so that they don't get some random attorney of random guardian ad litem that, you know, only visits with these children for an hour, less than an hour, and then pretends to go and represent their best interest. Is this someplace, can we, can we get this done, or do I need to go talk to someone else, or what do, what do I need to do?
There are a private separate board, so my suggestion is you would talk with them to see what their funding levels are, what they're doing, and you might find more about their mission, because maybe there are ways that you can help them, and we don't know.
Okay.
I used to actually work for Access and volunteer there, years, many moons ago, when it was actually located right across the street, and you're right, they are always looking for volunteers. They're having an event actually tomorrow night at the L. S. Club, so that would be probably, if you contact them during the day.
Okay, all right, thank you.
My name is Councilwoman Denise McCall, and I live on...
Did you pull the mic towards you?
My name's Denise McCall, and I live at 604 North Jeffries. My concern is that we be able to discuss the code, Chapter 4, animals, Article 1 in general. The reason being, I have some, since I've read it, I have some, hopefully I'm not misunderstanding it, and if I am understanding it, it's very disturbing to me. Animals that are not deemed per se in the article are injuring people, myself included, two this year, probably two more after the other one. Something needs to be done between what is, what the, where the animal is at that point from beginning, and between where it's deemed so as dangerous, because they were only deemed as if after they do something to a person, like myself, and there's something missing There's things that can be done to lower that risk significantly and make our citizens able to walk the streets without being worried about being attacked.
Councilwoman, my name is Billy Mann. I'm here for the same thing with Denise, it seems like we have a lot of, we have a lot of laws on the books when it comes to dogs and them running loose, but it seems like we only react after a dog's attacked somebody. We've had two, I know of, major pit bull attacks lately. The dog gets put down, and I just wonder if we can't be looking at some kind of laws or training for people to have dogs that they can control before incidents happen.
I'm going to agree with you, I've actually made the same comments here on council, we have a lot of laws, but basically, unless it's between the hours when the shelter is out and the animal control officer is out, the laws pretty much mean nothing unless somebody calls the police. Nobody's gonna do anything. I mean, I walk, me and my family walk all the time, we always see loose dogs, it's always after 5, after 6, you know, nobody's out there. I don't know what a good solution is, to be honest, but I do agree with you that, I mean, we've got laws, but what good are they if nobody's gonna enforce them except, you know, 8 to 5, or whatever the hours are, 40 hours a week, or 50, that the animal control officer...
You'll need to change.
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, and I don't know, I think you guys would have to go about changing something on this. on this, because I had a rottweiler myself, and I thought he was perfectly harmless, but he got to the point where if I walked him, he walked me. And I decided I had to get rid of the dog, because if I can't control him, I can't keep him from attacking other people. And I think if we looked at something like that, as far as being able to keep controlling your animal and proving that you can, I know the dog that attacked Denise was a rescue from a pit bull thing. And I think it, the person was needing help just to clean their house. Now, it seems like they shouldn't be allowed to have two full-grown pit bulls if they can't control the one that attacked her.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the solution is. I mean, I agree with you that there's a problem, but, I mean, if you ask me, I think the biggest problem is manpower, to be honest, you know? You know, the police are spread pretty thin as it is. I mean, we're looking for officers right now. So, you know, how do you, you know, you can't, you know, on one hand, you wanna say, "Well, make them do it," because, you know, it is a law, but on the other hand, they've got more important things to do as well, you know? So, I don't know what a good answer is.
Was the dog on a leash, or was he just running around? I didn't quite hear everything.
Well, in her case, that woman invited her into her house for an interview, and then invited somebody else within the same amount of time. And like I said, she was already looking for somebody to help her in the house, so obviously she wasn't capable of having those dogs. Now, I think in the other attack, the dogs were running loose, so...
See, and what I'm hearing, I, you know, I'll tell anyone, I know, we were just talking about some things that we know that are going on with some dogs or people. The thing you have, the dog, some dog lovers, you're gonna have to, you know, as an ordinance, we have to look at when we're going, there's gonna be a thin line between personal property and their privacy, and what they can have, and being able to, and I think it would be very hard for us to be able to deem or tell sometimes if that, what that dog is gonna do outside or in certain situations. I agree, I think, like you said, if we can enforce all the rules that we have on the books, probably would be...
Especially the leash law. Too often I see the dogs without issues on them.
And I, you know, and I guess it goes to, everybody's gonna have, we, we'll have to, as a community, sort of take our part in doing it. So people, you know, if you're living in a neighborhood, and I, you always hear me talk about community. If you have a neighbor that doesn't, we have to have those relationships and stuff, where we can start saying, you know, "This is the way we expect it, this is our block." We're not, you know, we have kids and bringing that up. And then that helps us to enforce the laws, because if everybody's, if, you know what I'm saying? Together and on the same page, it makes it a lot easier than saying, "Hey, we need to call this," or "This is where we need to go." So it's making sure that, you know, during the hours up until five, you can call the animal shelter. After that, you'd have to call Public Safety, but getting that information to the proper people at the proper time, I think, is also gonna be key.
I think somebody else wants to talk about this.
Jamie Blair, nine two five East Love. I would like to suggest to the council that you guys could maybe look at some way that we could provide free or low-cost obedience training to people with dogs, so that they, that, that would be like a, sort of a ground-floor measure, so we could see if people aren't able to take care of or handle their dogs, and get them properly socialized and stuff like that. And in addition to that, I think that it would be a really good idea if, if we had a program like that, if you could, the instructor says, "This dog seems uncontrolled early, you can't control your dog," they could issue you some sort of a warning, and then if the dog attacks someone later, you could be charged with negligence. Because I think that the problem is, is we're focusing on the animals when it's a, it's a human problem. It's always a human problem. People aren't taking the responsibility that they need to be for their animals, and we're not holding them criminally liable, and we should be.
Well, the only thing I see coming up with that is, it still goes back down to money and having the funds. There's so many things that we're working on with funding.
Absolutely, I understand.
And so it's also, you know, finding solutions and maybe funding sources, and maybe seeing what, you know, if there's some other organizations that could possibly work to offer something like that.
Absolutely. And, yeah, if you guys wanna take it, you know, like have a meeting about it at some point, I can try to see if I can bring in some outward, outside resources to help get something like that paid for. And I know that we do something in the spring, as far as spay and neuter clinics, where we offer low-cost spay and neuter. I think if we were to extend that program, find funding to extend that program throughout the year, we might see less of this sort of thing as well.
Well, if you definitely have a way to get some funding sources, we'd love to sit down.
We'll try. All right, thank you.
We might, who knows?
Exactly.
We might. I mean, people are interested in dogs, so...
What happens in my neighborhood, they dump them off.
We're out on the edge, and people dump them off all the time, and, you know, they're
running around, and so...
One more thing, if I could, Mayor.
Go ahead.
To me, like she said, it's, it's not the animals. The animals were set up to fail, and they failed because of human interaction and lack of interaction at the proper time in their life. That's why these things, to get people to do that, if you don't socialize, then their only circle is those people around them. Everything else they see, they have scared of everybody else, because they don't know any better. So if you don't socialize them, and some of them don't want them that way, they want